And operations committee to order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Fellow audience. Viewers may watch the board, live board committee meetings online at D cap's dot net backslash board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Any public comment?
No public.
See any public comment? All right. Draft committee meeting minutes from the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. Were the approval of the draft committee meeting minutes from the prior meeting, are there any changes to the prior minutes? If no changes.
No changes.
There are no changes, meeting minutes will be presented and moved on and moved to the next item. Resolutions supportive stormwater management plan. I defer to Ms. Hill.
So I'll let Paul give a summary, but as it relates to this new requirement, so we are required to have a stormwater management plan. It's called MS four through Eagle. Paul's done a lot of research, talking to other school districts throughout the state. He's been working with the city and the county. And we are required to have the board adopt a resolution as part of this plan. We have had our legal team review it, they had no issues with it. They were kind of surprised they hadn't heard from any other other school districts, but they didn't have any issues, there were zero changes to it. So Paul, can you just explain the consultant you've been working with?
Yeah, we hired our environmental group to do some work on this for us. They've done work for many other school districts and municipalities in the state. What it boils down to is, we have a new regulated area. This is a new area of regulation for Traverse City. It's other locations statewide have already done this, so.
It's based on census, correct?
It's based on the census.
Once your census reaches a certain population, then you require it.
Fifty thousand in population in an urbanized area. The purple on the screen is the identifies the regulated areas within our school district. The black outline is the TCAP school district on the map. We have ten facilities on six sites that fall within the regulated area that require permitting. Those are the ones listed on the screen there. The Glen Loomis, Thurlby, Central High, Eastern, Trav Heights, Traverse City High School, East Middle, Cherry Knoll, and West Middle, Montessori. We also have nine other properties within regulated areas, but are not required to have permits because they retain all of the stormwater onsite. We don't discharge any of it. And then we've got obviously a handful of other properties that are not within regulated areas or part of the regulated areas. So we do not need permits for those. So these are the areas that we're required to have permits for. Permit has been submitted in a draft form, it's in review at the state level right now and.
This is for the Eagle?
This is for the Eagle. And the board. I lost the word.
Resolution.
Resolution, there we go. The board resolution is part of that permitting requirement.
What are the, are there any financial implications to this? Because I know Traverse City has some serious stormwater issues going on right now.
Well, we had to hire a consultant and permit fee.
But a part of the reason we're not partnering or teaming with the city or the township or that is just because of some of those costs that would be in our way, be in front of us, so.
So we're not automatically with this part of a solution that might be a municipal solution for the city of Traverse City?
No, no, we're on our own, we have our own plan. We actually talked to a school district downstate that you can join with your county or city. And he's had several conversations with both and attended several meetings and they did ask us to. The problem that was recognized downstate was they put additional regulations on top of what's required in the plan. And that does have an expense that is completely borne by the district if you do that. So everybody recommended the attorneys and the consultant and the southern district downstate that already went through it, that you have your own plan.
It's called nesting and one of the other reasons is we'd have, if we did a nesting arrangement, we'd have the city to work with, the county to work with, the township to work with. And when you nest with a group or municipality like that, they hold the permit. So then they can basically dictate changes and requirements to meet the permitting. Whereas if we hold our own permit, then we do our own maintenance, we do our own monitoring, management.
So there's, I mean, there's really nothing we can do about this. I mean, it's a, it's a compliance that's okay.
Yeah, it's completely related to census, it's existed, we just have never been susceptible to it because of the census population.
And I just have a curiosity about the Montessori, West Middle, I thought we had our own retaining ponds with both of those schools.
We do, but there's, it steps down and eventually it feeds into the wetland that surrounds it. So it discharges. And the whole thing is, once you put it into a pipe, it discharges, that's what kicks this into gear or the permitting requirement. Once you put it into a pipe and then that pipe discharges somewhere else.
Okay, and everything that we've done prior, we've gotten permanent, worked with Eagle anyway. This is just more of a plan of maintenance and monitoring.
Well, I won't get any deeper, but I know the city at least estimated they need to spend a million dollars a year for the foreseeable future just to bring their system up. And if we're tied into that system, it was just curious.
We're not tied in in a lot of places.
Well, anywhere is. So you're looking for a, any other questions? Okay. I would make the motion that we move this on to the full board on consent for approval.
Second.
If there's a favor, I.
Yeah, we switched up the roles.
I was just rolling with that.
Let's pretend like I didn't make the motion. All right, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. All right. Mahogany Foundation donation.
Katie Kewish.
Yes, so we're pleased to announce that Mahogany Foundation for the second year in a row has awarded SSN with a gift of twenty thousand dollars. It is the second year, last year they awarded us with ten thousand dollars. If you're not familiar with the Mahogany Foundation, it's a local private foundation. It's led by Dan and Meredith Falconer. They started it in two thousand three. Meredith shared with me last year that the focus of it is community initiatives, but when they started having kids of their own, they recognized the need for youth wellness within our community and they kind of shifted their focus to children. And so we are pleased that it's the second year that they've awarded that to us, it'll have a huge impact. Last year, we used some of the funding to provide the eleven carrying closets within the elementary school buildings. And this year, we're going to use it for basic essentials and then for our winter gear pop-up, which Julie and I worked on a project yesterday and she found a great name called the Winter Warm-Up. So we're going to start calling it that. And so that'll be able to help us provide. We have a lot of coats left over last year that were donated at the end of the season, but we do not have any boots. And as y'all know, those are very expensive. So we'll be outfitting students with that by appointment only, it'll be first couple of weeks of November. And students and families will be able to come here and shop for those items for free. So thanks to the Mahogany Foundation.
It's amazing, Katie, is that all new stuff, new things that you offer or do you take some donations?
It's a little bit of both. Yeah, and thankfully, kids love to thrift shop right now, so some of the kids that come in like that. But yeah, gently used and brand new items. We served about three hundred kids at the back to school pop-up. And we just, in the first month of school, we've already got over a hundred and fifty requests for shoes and things that we didn't hit during that pop-up. So we purchased brand new for them, so.
Okay, got it.
Feel free to bring in anything you have at home, it was jolly.
Yes, take it.
I've got some, that's why, that's exactly why I was asking, I'm sure lots of people do, so.
Yes, they do, it's wonderful, yeah, teen items are a big thing right now, so. Baggy sweatpants and t-shirts and yeah.
Well, thank you to the Mahogany Foundation, that's absolutely amazing.
Thank you to the supporters, yeah, that's, that's very nice of them to do that.
Yes.
Motion to move this on, do I consent or do we want to be able to talk about this at the board meeting?
I'd like to make it a discussion item, yeah, just to honor the foundation and make sure our community hears it again.
Got a motion to move it on to the board on discussion.
Second.
You made the motion, you had second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you again to the Mahogany Foundation. Bits and services of purchases, facilities, Rand.
Yeah, good morning. Yeah, so each year, our facilities department, we go through and do an evaluation on all of our custodial equipment just to help identify the pieces of equipment that have either surpassed their useful life or just become cost prohibitive to continue trying to make repairs on it. We also run a preventative maintenance program through our provider to have our equipment serviced a couple of times a year just to kind of help extend that life expectancy and also identify issues kind of early on. So this year, we have nine pieces of equipment, most of those being either floor scrubbers or carpet extractors, excuse me. These will be purchased from Imperial Day through our main partners purchasing committee or cooperative, excuse me. And then per our standard procedure, we just added a ten percent contingency to this purchase.
And you typically, you also evaluate while things are at buildings, what's being used, what's not being used. If something's being used too heavily, you swap it around. So it's more than just taking a look at the equipment and the quality.
Yes, once, usually once we, we bring in new equipment, we do a lot of kind of swapping and moving around. Some places have way more tile than they do carpets and, and so, yeah, we're moving things around and making sure that they're getting used. And if they're not getting used, we're trying to figure out what the, what the reason is. You know, it could be that it just isn't serving that building very well or it's deteriorated to where we, we didn't know, so.
And then do you try to sell the, the, the pieces that you're retiring or, or do you kind of wait in the district until they die?
Typically, we use them pretty hard. Cleaning equipment gets used hard, so when we're done with it, it's, it's not worth much, so.
Okay, got it.
That brings up a point, are we making an effort now on new construction? Are we doing tile, are we doing carpet, are we doing some hybrid of both or?
Classrooms, we typically do LVT, it's a vinyl tile that does not require waxing. So just to clean it with water and some of the machines that facilities buys, just basically clean with water. We don't wax anything anymore.
No.
The newer stuff.
But no, we don't put carpet in classrooms right now.
Well, maybe very sound debatement or something.
The music room, I mean, it's, there's particular rooms that require carpet, but very rarely do we use it if we don't have to. Even some of the main offices, which actually we put carpet in the main office at Eastern. And when we went to Montessori, they're like, can we have tile? Like, it just gets way too much wear and tear. As you know, later on, when we go to replace carpet, just a replacement of carpet, one for one is not a bond expense, it's a repair. So it was pretty thoughtful of them to consider that, knowing that, you know, ten years down the road, if it starts to get pretty worn, they likely won't get new. So having tile in there is really helpful. I'm sorry, LVT.
All right, so are we set to move this on to consent?
Yes, yep. I move to, move, I move to approve to consent ninety-two, eight fifty-two with the ten percent contingency on at the consent calendar for the full board.
Second.
All of them, say aye, aye, opposed, thank you. Informational items. Now, do I have an, are we doing tag on this agenda or?
No, that, I believe that's on curriculum, is that correct?
Yeah, I know it was on curriculum, I didn't know if there's any implications for finance.
I think it's going to the full board as a discussion item, it looks like on the thirteenth, I believe.
Yeah. Capital projects update.
All right, here we go.
It's pretty good, looks like they're using it.
They're using it, they are using it.
I have to tell you, I have had three community members that I know that have like a niece, a daughter, or a granddaughter in the building. They are, the kids are loving this cafeteria, they're so excited about it, it was really nice to hear.
The last pieces of glass got put in, you know, there's a couple of little things, little punchless items that we'll have to handle or take, get taken care of here, but nothing major in cafeteria.
It's beautiful.
It's getting used, even the staff there says the flow in there of when the kids come in and how they go through the cafeteria and get their food and get served is way better than it's ever been there, so.
And just curiosity from that picture, are we moving more towards the round tables and away from the long tables ultimately? But use them until you have to replace them type of thing, I wondered, okay.
Some schools do a mix because you can get more seating in there and some students don't mind them, but majority of our schools have the round tables.
The last purchases that we've made for tables all the way around, we haven't bought any of the long ones.
What's the capacity in that?
I'm not sure.
Okay, what now?
Double what it was.
And what was it?
Not sure, but.
I can look that, I can figure it, look that up.
I was just curious.
And then, oops, skipped one here, on the backside, they were, I was up there yesterday, they were putting the glass in, the last pieces of glass and that, in the, in the windows, this is the classroom addition on the east end. And then in the courtyard, those are the three classrooms that were added on. Again, they were, they were there yesterday putting in the last pieces of glass and touching things up. This is the workroom, teacher's workroom, caseworks in, countertops coming in, flooring, ceiling tiles, all the finish work. They're doing finish painting, the guy in between the cabinets was painting. One of the classrooms.
It's a nice and bright workroom, sometimes they're kind of tucked in the back with no windows and it's nice.
This is one of the classrooms, the rack on the whiteboard is the new monitor.
Display.
Display that they're going to use instead of the short throw projectors and that, so it's finishing up. This is the storage building out at facilities. They were, they're putting the, the roof panel should be going on here by the end of the week. They're doing the insulation in the roof area, some of that is going to give us some much needed space out there for storage. This Saban, they milling the parking lot, we got that pretty well done. And then doing the retainer system, the stormwater retention at Saban under the new parking lot area. And that was yesterday going in. And this is the north side, replacing all the old siding, pulled that all off, the windows are out, prepping for the new windows. This is the demolition on the inside, there are all those classrooms, there were four classrooms that were divided by walls, the whole partitions are taken out. Prepping all that for the new work. It's going to see a new life. Then EV charging, the electrical contractor that's doing his work for the bus charging station, he said, I have never seen consumers' energy move so fast. Really, consumers hired these guys, brought them out, they put in a new pole, three new transformers up there. They ran new wiring all the way down from, almost from Hammond down the way there. And, and all this, had it all set up, it's all sitting there waiting for him to put the.
Transformer bus?
The last components in, in the meter in, in here and that. And you can see right back behind it in front of the bus, there's three places where we've got holes cut in the pavement for them, they're going to core over and pop up. We've got one charging station right now, but we've set this up so we could add two more.
It's great, they don't have to tear up the pavement because it's new pavement.
Well, it's just a cutout and they'll.
No, I mean when they core under.
They core, yeah, they're going to core under so we can leave it. And then, I don't know, what do you want to talk about with this, but I threw this on here just as an update to show you, hey, look how nice it looks at night when the lights are on it. But I'm waiting to hear back from the county, they're supposed to have a vehicle count done out on Long Lake Road so they can adjust the lights right now for that. And the new lights are still coming the end of this month, end of October, they'll have the new lights put in out there. They bid it, it took a longer, like Christine said, a longer period to bid this because it is federal money and that coming in to pay for part of this. And the new lights will have left turn arrows, it'll be left turn.
Here's our, here's our opportunity to talk about it since we have a picture of the new construction at West Senior High.
Yeah, why don't we just do sort of an update on where we're at and where we anticipate being in the next thirty, sixty, ninety days?
So we anticipate having signals replaced with the left turn arrows out there at Long Lake, at the entryway, which will move traffic faster out of there. Hopefully, they're adjusting the signals here between now and then to also aid in the traffic that's backed up out there. We've got a few extra signage, just signs to put up around the site to help direct and then a couple more pavement markings to put in on the bus loop.
The, the big issue is not being able to turn on to Long Lake Road without, without a light that is a turn lane. That's the problem. And so, you know, we were very much working with the road commission from beginnings of this project and.
Do you mean from the school? From the school turning left?
So there's so much traffic built up that just the amount of traffic right now is going all the way almost to Gallagher's Bar Market.
Yeah, plus Herkenner's back, so nobody can get out.
So nobody can get out until it's almost yellow and then a car or two is able to go. And so you need to be able to have that turn signal that dedicate, so these people can't go while that traffic's moving. Now more than one car can vacate, because a lot of people bring their kid into the school and go to leave, go into town maybe and work and they can't, they can't get there.
Is there any way we could have like a flagger there, an all state police or, no?
I mean, we can't, you know, it would have to be dedicated to something that the county and the road commission would do from that point. We had anticipated originally, I think, on October first date is what we were first told originally. Like, we had hoped that they would have had it done when we had our part done.
It was even surprising when they told us October one, because we'd been working with them for six, eight months on this.
They've known along, and the fact that we've changed to a single entry was their request. It was the county's request that we get rid of one of those lights out there. And they had gone and gotten a federal grant to do that.
They were checking.
The county road commission. So the reality is, is it's not going to get better until two things happen. They install that light and that the interlock and thirty-two traffic with the bridges is done so that people are not having to cut over to use Long Lake Road as their way into Traverse City.
And Cedar Run.
Twelve months down the road.
No, they're going to open up, they'll.
Yeah, that's October.
Yeah, in October, they'll have phase one done and they'll open that back up. And then I think it's next summer, they're planning on doing the other part. So those things they think alleviating together, but we're at the mercy of the road commission getting that light up to really improve the situation.
Maybe just, we could send out maybe through West Senior High, just in the parent letter or something, just re-explaining because the ticker article and some of the comments said, you know, this is the worst design ever and who designed this? But I don't think people understand, it's like a phase two, right? So we're doing this and then next summer and we could only get X amount done just to put back out an explanation of, you know, we know this isn't perfect, but this is only fifty percent done right now.
I know Brian's done some of that, but I'll talk to him to see if we can, you know, do some more with it.
And it's really not, it, it has nothing to do with West Senior High at this point, it has to do with traffic. Because we're experiencing that on West Silver, on West Silver Lake Road as well, it's backed up all the way to Seacor. I mean, people, it's just gridlock everywhere on the west side of town, unfortunately. And on, on North Long, as soon as people that are coming straight, it's been backed up all the way to Twin Lakes. And as soon as people can get released from that light, they get stopped by Zimmerman, so people are like stuck. So it's not, I have a hard time believing it has anything to do with this now, other than the fact that we got rid of the left turn, the other light. But again, that was out the request of the county. I had no idea originally when we started this project that they weren't doing the installation at the same time we were, we thought it was September one. So I don't know what, with the federal grant slowed them down with their process?
They took their time bidding it for some reason, I don't know why, because we had them lined up with us and in meetings with us all along as we were doing this, so.
When we switched traffic and we were doing, everybody was using that, the first, I'd say first light if you're heading towards West Senior High, the one that's bagged now. They switched that for us so that it would work when people were coming in going from that entrance. Then they switched it again when we opened the other one, then they bagged it for us, so they've been out multiple times. They did just recently do a count to try to do some timing changes on that, to try to alleviate the pressure and hopefully fix a little bit of the Zimmerman light, that light issue of people getting stuck in between. I don't know what changes they've made, Paul reached out and hasn't heard back yet.
So, you know, in the article, I read the same article, it said that they've got it awarded to the bidder and that, you know, the bidder's been told that time is of the essence.
Yeah, they were, it was, it was a delay in getting the products, so.
We're saying.
Well, thanks to the explanation, obviously, we can't, part of the problem is that it's West Senior High and there's timing and there's lots of students and there's lots of traffic and so.
And that, you know, the worst time is the morning, I've been out there multiple times and watched it. And the hardest time is the morning when people are coming in and people are commuting into work right at the same time in, that's the biggest problem. I was there when, at the end of the day, in ten minutes, it was empty.
Yeah, it's no issue in the.
You know, it was, it was good to go. With the combination of some kids stay after for band athletics, for these things, you know, you don't have the commute happening right at that three o'clock timeframe. Like in the opposite direction, it's closer to probably generally five, so like, you know, watching it from that standpoint, pick up, everything worked perfectly. You know, it's that, it's that morning commute issue is the problem. It's not the sign, it's that light and the commute of people that has bottlenecked Long Lake Road.
And you can't even like go back through Cedar Run to try to alleviate the pain from North Long because that's in construction. So it's just, it's just kind of unfortunate.
Yeah.
We're fixing the roads, but.
All at the same time.
I don't know what else to say.
I know, that's crazy.
Yeah, short term pain for long term gain or whatever.
We'll continue to communicate with the road commission of those elements and I will talk to Brian about.
Anything else? Alright, Sustainability Committee report out.
Yeah, so we met uh earlier this week and uh really good meeting. We had the chance to um identify pretty close to completing our vision statement. Um for what we are having this group do on behalf of the district. Um we've uh put some initial thoughts together of a TCAP one point O sustainability plan. Um some key elements to it is that we will have each of our schools uh this uh uh late winter, early spring. Complete the Michigan Green School application, uh we have some buildings that already are, but we have some that are not. So uh Jesse and Dana are working with our principals um on completing that uh uh that process. Part of that is uh a sustainability inventory survey um that the the team has. That a lot of it will feed into that Michigan Green Schools application, so we're working on that. Um one of the things the group has talked a lot about is what is it that we can empower students to do as a part of this work? Um knowing, you know, we don't have extra staff to do a lot of things and and what is it that, again. Uh a part of our mission is to have our kids be educated and have the ability to advocate and and do work. So one of the things that uh the group wants to do is see if we can work with each of the high school sustainability clubs to do uh work with our elementary schools. And one thing is uh we wanna work with one of our elementary schools on a sustainability green on their plan. Um which may include uh lunchroom practices, um food waste, some of those kind of things, so I'm excited about that. Um one of the things that we know is right now, um we have three solar panels in the district. Um one, we were able to get up and around the one at West Woods, but the ones at Traverse City Central High School. Um and Traverse Heights, I believe is the other, um but they have some issues that they're not working right. Um and so, so they need some repair. One of the, you know, one of the things that when these were done, it wasn't really thought about sustainability for them, about when they do break, like how do you fix that? So one of the things the group's going to do is work on writing a grant, um going to first uh write to the Traverse City Light and Power. They're both in the TCLP um uh service area on getting um a grant for funds to get those fixed. And working more efficient efficiently and and up and running. Um so the the club is or the uh committee is gonna work on uh a subcommittee to to do that work. Um and then um with that, there were four committees that were created, subcommittees out of it. Uh one working with uh food service, um one working on energy, um with dedic collection and the solar panels I had talked about. Also analyzing and learning from what uh the train uh system has done as far as savings for the district. Um for the environment and financially. Um another that is specifically working on the Green Schools applications, and then another working on looking at resource efficiency. Are there things in the district we can continue to do that are more efficient? Um so that is something that we have, uh we also have a part of our committee, um uh. Uh Ken O'Brien, who's one of our facilities uh uh managers, as well as Tom, our food service director, um a part of the group. So uh they're working with the folks that are a part of it, and uh next month we'll have those sub- subcommittees meet. And look at very um some more uh narrowed down specifics with the plan for me to be able to come to our December board meeting. With what our initial one point O plan will be, so.
Good update, thank you.
Alright, finance, the wonderful wild world of finance.
Well.
Yeah.
Uh I'm not really sure, um I think there's a little discrepancy on whether the governor signed a continuation budget at four AM or seven AM.
He signed it at seven AM.
Yeah.
You know, they passed it at two AM.
Yes, but the government didn't shut down, which I really don't understand how that works, I don't know how the government was able to run without.
Constitutionally, they should have.
So I don't know, maybe we don't legally have to approve our budget. I don't know that it's really a law anymore, it might just be a guideline. Um I I kinda posed that to Weston Sandy, I'm like, what would happen, we'd lose funding.
Yeah, right, we would, yeah.
We won't do that, but um there doesn't appear to be any, any kind of penalty at the state level, so. Um the federal government shut down, um Sandy and I were just talking about if that would have any impact on our food service federal claim. Um cause right now we are completely free, but we get our food free and reduced claim from the federal government and then the state subsidizes the difference. So um we're still getting funding from both parties, so we don't think that it will um have any impact on us because we don't actually claim. Um is it September until November or October?
Claim September and October, um but we did receive notice from MDE yesterday that the meals for federal. Um reimbursement would be held at least through the October thirtieth.
Okay, so um we've been told Title One won't be impacted. Um I I guess it's kind of unknown whether anything else will be impacted, we'll have to kind of wait and see. I I'm not hearing anything positive that that's gonna be a short term fix, it kinda seemed like that's a, it's gonna be a few minutes, it's not really, they're not close. Um but it it, we were kinda having a little uh finance update ourselves and kinda were laughing a little bit about how long it takes to do the continuation budget. So they, you know, if they get, like they continue, if they do a continuation budget till November twenty-one. They have just enough time between now and then to do another one, so I'm not really sure when they have time to actually talk about the real budget, so it's interesting. Um we have been told at the state level that universal meals is included, obviously, we've not seen the details, so. Uh we're hoping it's not that instead of something else we were told we were getting, um but we'll have to just wait and see what the impact is. Um even if we know our foundation, we still don't know our bottom line impact because likely that means there's something different with categoricals. And we don't know which ones and who are funding with that, so we really won't be able to tell you what a bottom line impact is until we have all the detail. And it'll take them a while to write that up. It's, it's been.
In other words, status quo.
Yeah, it's been interesting, to say the least, I was a little frustrated when we got the uh letter from the uh MDE superintendent. And the governor encouraging us to continue to provide field make free meals when they didn't give us a budget. Um I don't know, that seems, that seems a little bit like a slap in the face.
It's uh.
We didn't, we didn't do our job, but we'd like you to do it for us, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a bunch of a mess, but, you know, I talked to John Ross yesterday morning and the night before late. And uh, you know, they, they don't even know a lot, I mean, they know the details, we know, they've let little things go. You know, they're saying right now that the the foundation right now will be ten thousand fifty dollars is what's being said. Although again, that's not absolutely confirmed, and then it was reported li- later yesterday. That there will be the safe, uh the mental health and and safety money, about three hundred and twenty-one million. But um non-public schools are now included in that figure, so what that takes from that, I don't know. So, you know, it's uh the the that's literally it, that's leaked out from that standpoint. Conference committee is being supposed to open at one fifteen this uh afternoon. Um we don't know if they'll just gabble in and wait or they'll actually have something, um cause the thought is, is the legislature is gonna come back at nine tonight. Um right now it's young Kipper and so it's a state holiday, um and so they, when the sun goes down. Uh they can conduct business as well, uh based on religious practices, so they'll start session at nine PM. And uh we'll see how long into the early mornings they go and see if we have something by Friday morning early. Or later Friday or maybe Saturday, I don't. There you go, but the good news is, is we're gonna continue doing what we do, great things for kids, feed kids and have school. So that's.
And and we're gonna pay our staff.
And we'll pay our staff, so that's, that's our job in this and we're gonna do our job completely and uh and figure out the rest as we go.
Alright, thanks for the clarity.
Yeah, what a strange time, what a strange, strange time.
And I just aside, are the state legislators getting paid also? And they will get paid to go shut down if there is one.
Well, and the state from that standpoint now, they they did a, they did a continuing resolution, so they funded government at one point.
On the general funds, right?
One point four billion dollars from that element, and so they, they have money for eight days.
Alright, okay. Um district purchases.
Yep, so uh document is in front of you, um we do have now an estimate for the Glen Loomis renovations. This one creeped up on us, uh we have to completely upgrade our fire alarm system. And we currently don't have strobes or pull stations in classrooms and we're required to put those in, um so we'll be adding that as well. Um I'm trying to think of what else was added, um some external exterior doors. Um we've had some issues with some doors sticking pretty bad, we had one open um all night the other night because it stuck when somebody used it. So we're gonna uh replace a little over a hundred thousand dollars worth of exterior doors. Just feel like we need to do a few more things when we're gonna have kids in theirs, kids in this building to make sure it's safe, especially cause it's gonna be for three years. So I don't really want to put off something that we can do now um in one contract and be a little bit more efficient um with our dollars. And um I had this budgeted, um I had a million budgeted, so um I I think we're fine with that, um would like to spend less on it. Um this just means when we don't use this building any longer for central grade, there's less money we have to spend on an overall upgrade, if you will. We have to do the roof and some other things, obviously, we'd love to do some upgrades inside classrooms like the flooring and the light, the other lighting will be done. The flooring, uh painting, cabinetry, like it's just all really outdated, so that would be a nice future bond conversation. Of however we're gonna use this building, um but the things that we're doing now are not things that we're going to have to rip out, we're not wasting money. It's just less we'll spend in the future. Uh we're completely redoing the PA system, I don't know if you've seen some of the speakers, I, you know.
They're old.
Kinda feel like grown American pickers to see if they're.
Maybe we invite them, when we do, they, when we do uh.
Central grade, yeah.
Central grade in here, yeah.
Hey, you never know.
Anyway, um as things, um you uh you'll notice as things get approved, um we move them down to the bottom and put the date that they were approved by the board. And then the uh bottom line number of the twenty twenty-four expenses, the fees, owner expenses. And the pending um budgeted items, that fourteen million, it was fifteen five, so that number goes down as things get approved. They're no longer sitting there as a budgeted item. So.
Super helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Where are we on the A and E drawings for the field house, are we, have we seen any preliminaries or anything at all?
Nope.
They're doing pretty much the site evaluation, um.
Yep, still basically into the ground and and you know, meeting with, we met with DEQ, East Bay Township, all that to get. You know, the thing that I was adamant on is like before we really spend any money, like can the site work?
Yeah.
Like, you know, to make sure, let's talk to every entity and we have, we've talked with East Bay Township, we've talked with DEQ, everybody's on board with, nope, you're good. You know, what's interesting about that site um is there's a municipal well on um for East Bay Township. And so that has a little bit of intricacies of what you can and can't do near it, um that we've had to address and make sure we could. You're, you know, essentially two things, you cannot have a building within three foot of the well and you cannot have any underground piping within two hundred feet of the well. And so that we we have the engineers and stuff having a look at the site to go, okay, and water retention basin has to be, can't be within two hundred foot of the well. So we had to say, okay, can everything fit and make and make from that element, and as of right now preliminary, we're good as far as all that. So at this point now, uh Gordy Fraser uh engineering firm here in town has been hired. And they're working on, you know, drawing designs, starting with that, the architect has that all lined up and rolling.
And we've done phase one, phase two analysis, that there's no contamination of it, given that it was farming.
We had soil borings there, all that was done, mostly clay, none, no issues from that standpoint that have been identified. Um all good from that standpoint.
Okay. And we still expect that to be delivered when?
December, January-ish, is when we hope to be able to have those bid numbers.
Alright, anything else on district purchases? I take it not? Alright, um any other items that anybody would like to address?
Yes, sir.
Alright, then I have a motion, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.